Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gary Krantz. I am the Mayor of Shelton, and I'd like to thank you for coming out on a beautiful day. And before I start this meeting, I just asked everybody in the staff if they didn't get the memo that I had sent out, but nobody did get it that today is Islandshire Day. So, I'm sorry for all you suits and ties out there, but I just, you know, I had to obey my memo or whatever. So, the first item of business is going to be a commission report, and this is going to be given to us by Jim Morell, and he's going to present us a report. So, I just ended at that.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners Moore, McDowell, good to see you on a sunny day as well. As you know me around town, my name's Jim Morell. I'm CEO for Peninsula Community Federal Credit Union. At a national level, I also have the opportunity to serve NACHA, which is the National Automated Clearinghouse Association, as the Vice Chair of the Board of Directors. NACHA has operated for more than forty years, serving as the trustee for the ACH Network, managing the development, administration, and rules for the financial network that moves $25 billion of electronic payments each year, valued at $43 trillion. Through its collaborative effort, the Board supports nearly 11,000 financial institutions across the country, and it's with NACHA's expertise and guidance that the ACH Network is now one of the largest, safest, and most reliable electronic payment systems. Earlier this month, the City of Shelton began electronically depositing city employees' payroll into their personal bank accounts using direct deposit facilitated by the ACH Network. The timing was good, as May just happens to be Direct Deposit Month. We welcome the city to this network. Today, as NACHA Vice Chair, I would like to recognize Finance Director Nola Von Nudig and Accounting Manager Megan Crossen. The effort to set up an organization such as the City of Shelton does not just happen without a lot of vision and guidance that Nola provided. There is also a tremendous amount of detail that goes into implementing direct deposit. Throughout this process, Megan needed to meticulously ensure that every piece of account information was confidentially handled and entered into the direct deposit system. City employees rely on this effort to ensure that they receive their payroll, which they depend upon to support their households. Nola and Megan, if you could join me up here for a moment? On behalf of NACHA as Vice Chair, we'd like to welcome you to the 10,000 financial institutions that support direct deposit across the country, and welcome you to the ACH and direct deposit system. I have these plaques for your appreciation. Hand this one for Nola, and then read this. "The certificate of appreciation in honor of direct deposit and direct payment via ACH Month 2017. We acknowledge Nola and Megan Crossen, County Manager, City of Shelton, for adopting and successfully implementing direct deposit via ACH to process payroll for the City of Shelton, and for recognizing that the electronic deposit of payroll yields important benefits for employees and municipalities. Awarded by NACHA, the Electronic Payments Association, May 22nd. James M. Morell, Vice Chair for the Board, and Jan Estep, President and CEO." Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Jim. Next, we have a guest in the house, and he is the President and CEO of the South Sound YMCA, and so he's going to come and talk to us about some exciting things for Mason County. But first, we have our own Julie Nichols, who's going to introduce him.
Thank you, Mayor Krantz and Commissioners. I'm here today to introduce Kyle Kronk, who's CEO, President and CEO of the South Sound YMCA. He's going to talk to you today about all the progress we've made in bringing a YMCA to Shelton. I was last before you, I think, in February, asking for your support as we went before the Board of the South Sound Y, and I'm happy to report in March that they voted unanimously to come to Shelton and to enter into this next capital feasibility phase. So, Kyle will talk a little bit more about that. Thank you so much for your continued support, and we are making a lot of progress.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mayor and Councilmembers, and the City of Shelton. It's really cool to be standing here before you all today to talk about this, kind of where we are and providing an update, and I don't know that I've ever stood outside in a little waiting area, waiting for a meeting, where so many people come up to you and say, "I am so glad you're here. I'm so glad you're here." And it really is awesome that the South Sound YMCA volunteers and the SHARC group voted recently to come together to look at bringing a YMCA to the City of Shelton. We are thrilled. You know that grassroots group of volunteers, probably twelve, maybe even thirteen years ago, came together to look at, you know, what is, what needs to happen in the City of Shelton for improved livability? And they did a huge amount of work to bring together a survey. That survey went out and looked at what are the needs, what are the programs that need to come to the City of Shelton? And it really was sort of a unanimous sort of idea that said, you know, if you're going to build a community center, it really ought to be a Y. And that is impressive. I have, I've seen a lot of different surveys with that same exact company that I've used in multiple YMCA's across the state of Washington, and never have I seen that said, "You need to come, and you need to, and it needs to be a YMCA." So, that was very awesome. And it's clear that so many different wins have happened, you know, celebrating wins. We just talked, we just saw a celebration of a win right here, which was pretty cool, looking at the educational vision that the Shelton Public Schools has. There's just a lot of big and small community victories that really look at, this is the right time to look at bringing a Y to Shelton? And as part of that process, you know, the first thing in looking at the numbers, it was like, 41% of the people surveyed said they'd join the Y. And that's, that's an impressive number. I didn't believe it at first, and Julie keeps giving me a bad time about that. But what that really did is that provided some confidence for our Board to say, "We really do need to take that next step and look at a capital feasibility study and that early design process. We need to see..." I don't think it's really a matter of if there's a YMCA coming to Shelton, it's a matter of when, and what size, and what is the real scope, and what should we build so that we stay within our means? And we need to understand what that is. And we feel like, from a YMCA's perspective, we definitely have a tried and true process that we use, and we're asking for the city to support that at the $5,000 level to help us fund this next step. So, I'd be happy to take questions, but again, this is a thrilling moment, both for me and I think for the City of Shelton, just based on the community remarks that I had before I came in.
Any comments for our guest?
I do. I have a comment. I am so, so, so excited about this wonderful news, and I know that YMCA will add to, add so much to our livability, as well as help another, the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is near and dear to my heart. We're working on walkable cities and on improvements to our infrastructure that will make it easier to get out and walk, and make our community healthier, and I am thrilled, and I do support you 100%.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work. Thank you for coming to our community, and you can assure that we will do what we can do to support your cause.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And next is going to be our committee reports. The Commissioners have activities during the week that we have an opportunity to report on, and this would be that time. So, Commissioner Moore?
Okay. I'm going to start off, as usual, with last week, and just comment on the downtown cleanup that was sponsored by the Downtown Merchants. There were a number of different people from various entities, I guess, that participated. Yes, Shelton, I'm sorry, Skookum Rotary, Mo's, provided a great breakfast to kick us all into high gear with food to get us started. And there were just a lot of people that donated and showed up to work, and if you drive down Railroad Avenue, you will see the results. It was fun. It was a community event. It was a great way for us all to show love for our city and for our fellow citizens, and I had a great time. My husband was there, too. I imagine everybody is noticing all the construction around town. It's a great sound, and it's a great hope for the future as we complete infrastructure improvements, and there are many more to come, so I'm very excited about that. I hope it's not causing too much in the way of inconvenience, so just look at it with a smile. This week, I'm going to be meeting with Homes First and also with a group called LEHI, Low Income Housing Institute, about a partnership to get some low-income, nice apartments in our city. They are looking at building 20 units of mostly single-bedroom, but some two-bedroom units as well, and so I'm working with them to facilitate that, and that is a function of my role as, as the Chair of the Housing Coalition. On Thursday, I will be attending the EDC Membership Appreciation. I'm looking forward to that. That will be really fun, and that's it for this week.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McDowell?
Well, tomorrow night, I'm going to be attending the second part of the Business Watch Academy, and I don't own a business here in town, but it gave some good tips on even just the protection of your home, what you can do to protect that. A lot of really good information on how businesses, what businesses can do to protect their businesses. So, that was very interesting. Tomorrow, I have my Board of Health Board meeting. Wednesday, I have my Memorial Hall Board meeting, and also, I'm going to be attending the Olympic College Forum to be talking about the new president that's going to be coming and filling in the role as President of Olympic College, so I will be going to that. And Thursday, briefing with Ryan and the EDC Membership Drive at the Ridge Motorsports, Motorsports Park from four to seven. So, that's my, that's my week.
Thank you very much. And tomorrow, I will also be attending Part Two of the Shelton Police Business Academy, and that's something that teaches you all the things to do to protect your business and home from possible burglary's or whatever and stuff, and so it's been very, the first time was, meeting was very good, and we're looking forward to hearing more about that tomorrow evening also. Now, on Wednesday evening, my wife and I have been invited to a dinner at the Capital Event Center in Olympia to be recognized by the Capitol Educational Service District 113 for the city's role in the passing of our recent school bond and levy. So, well, so I'm proud to go and represent the city at that event. Thursday, also, I'm going to go out to the Ridge Motorsports Park to take, to be involved with the Economic Development Council's annual membership drive, and so if there's anybody out there in earshot of this microphone that has a business or wants to be involved with the Economic Development Council, we do have a membership, and you're more than welcome to join that group. So, that completes our weekly commission reports. Thank you very much. Next is the general public comment period. We have an opportunity for the public to speak, and that is three minutes per person. And so, do we have anybody signed up?
We do. Forrest Cooper?
Thank you very much, Commission. I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad Avenue. How on earth do you have justification to spend three times the cost for Public Works to install BOTS dots, or road turtles, on Railroad Avenue instead of painting, paint striping, when the long-term plan is to hopefully reconfigure or resurface the road in three to five years? According to Public Works, apparently staff was searching for a different aesthetic way to stripe the road when they decided BOTS dots were the answer. Well, combined with the proposed red infill color, in my opinion, the dots don't necessarily improve the aesthetics over striping. I took the time to photograph the road and superimpose a red divider with yellow stripe to provide the Public Works with a visual aid to illustrate the proposed change with paint. So, then it comes down to safety. The one benefit of the dots in this application would be at night during rainy weather. Well, the city could easily solve that by installing the proper LED units in the streetlights, solving many additional safety concerns to boot. Now for the hazards of the dots. As Railroad Avenue is Shelton's main street, there are currently and a future potential for many closed street activities, such as parades, car shows, and marathons. This means people on foot, period. Did you know ADA classifies a trip hazard as being between one-quarter and one-half inches tall? And the height of a BOTS dot minus the glue is three-quarters of an inch? So, now we have just installed hundreds of trip hazards zigzagging up and down our main street. It's not just the clumsy dude like myself that might fall, it's more of a concern to a marathon runner who could accidentally step on one of these, causing a career-ending injury. How about the middle school marching band? Should they be watching where they step at all times? How about the old-timer who loves hot rods and is fixated on the beauty of a pristine 1950's cruiser angle parked on the curb? Is he looking at the ground? How about the horse in the parade that steps on a dot and gets spooked and takes off into the crowd? Will businesses be affected by the auditory sound generated by vehicles running over the dots? How will they hold up under heavy truck traffic? Will the snowplow pop them off? Have you thought of any of these situations? Obviously not, because even though concerns have been brought to your attention, staff has still chosen to spend three times more than striping and have pulled many Public Works employees from other jobs to install a costly maintenance nightmare with very minimal benefits. Currently, the BOTS dots are being installed as we speak without public input or proper commission approval. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have someone else?
Not under general public.
Okay. Appreciate that. Next is, we'd like to recess out of a regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding the surplus, the sale, I believe, of the surplus Peterbilt roll-off truck. And so, at this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. As we talked about back on April 24th, when we set the public hearing, the roll-off truck is considered, we would like you to consider as surplus out of the solid waste utility, which requires a public meeting. This is one of the pieces of equipment that Mason County Garbage will not be purchasing through the agreement that we have with them to take over services on July 1st. So, at this time, we would like you to consider that surplus and give us authorization to make the sale of that surplus to an outside entity.
Okay. This is an action item, and so at this point, we do open this up to any comments from the public that might want to weigh in on this specific subject. Did we have anybody sign in for this?
No, we do not.
Okay. So, I don't see anybody quite stepping forward, so now, do we have any further questions or comments? I believe we've been over the subject a few times, and so, do we have any more questions or comments about selling this surplus equipment?
No.
All right. So, I would consider a motion, then.
I just want to make one comment on this, is I understand that this is going to be surplus to our needs because of the decision to privatize our garbage service. So, I will just say that, yes, I'm disappointed that we are doing this.
Okay. And for the record, I voted to privatize our garbage service, and I don't know for sure, because I don't remember if Commissioner Moore voted to do that also, but we did...
Commissioner Moore voted not to privatize our garbage service.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So, we do have a three-person commission, and I think Commissioner McDowell voted to do that also. So, that's where we are today. Let's then see if we have a motion to sell this.
Did he close the meeting? We need to close the meeting before you.
Well, let's do that right now. We are now going to close this public hearing and now enter into a motion to consider selling this surplus piece of equipment.
Well, I'll make that motion. I move to consider the solid waste utility 2,000 Peterbilt roll-off truck surplus and approve the sale of this equipment.
I will second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I am opposed.
Okay. The motion passes. Now, we are into the consent agenda, part of our program, and are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I am also.
Consent agenda. Payroll warrants numbered two, I'm sorry, 32, 3712 through 3761, and 01 through 90, and 14376 through 14397, in the amount of $612,570.82. Vouchers numbered 14521 through 14559, in the amount of $62,388.2.
Does the motion approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
And I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The agenda passes. Now, we are under Item Number F, which is an action agenda, and we are going to have our Communications Officer, Andy Arns. Arns, how do you pronounce your last name?
Arness.
Arness?
Correct.
Arness? Okay. Well, I'm kind of shocked at you, everybody. I've never quite said that. I always just called you Andy, so now I know the correct way to say Arness. Okay. You're going to talk to us about this lodging tax application from AABC Baseball.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As mentioned last week, this $50,000 request was submitted by the American Amateur Baseball Congress for funding to help with the $150,000 tournament fee associated with hosting the Pee-wee Reese World Series here in Shelton. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee held a special meeting on April 27 to consider the request, and they made a recommendation that a $30,000 allocation be made to help support this. In addition to the suggested amendments that we mentioned last week to the standard allocation agreement, and as authorized by Revised Code of Washington, Section 42.24.080, staff is, excuse me, requesting that the commission waive the reimbursement requirement detailed in Resolution Number 902-1006, which would then allow these funds to be released to the double ABC in advance of the event. If there are no further questions, I'd move that we waive that requirement, the reimbursement requirement, and approve the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation and approve the $30,000 allocation.
Okay. Before we speak, this is also a action item, and it does have the opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to speak specifically about this, now would be that opportunity. And do we, nobody has signed in for this one, then? No. Okay. So, now, do we have any questions for Andy?
I have a comment. So, this is for sure, I mean, we know this, but I don't know if anybody out there knows this is being taken out of the lodging tax and how much is in that fund right now?
Correct. Yes, this will be distributed from the Lodging Tax Fund, which our funds are just set aside for, physically for tourism and events like this. Currently, the balance of that fund is $112,679. And again, the first quarter projections for this year are currently at $13,525.56.
I had a person stop me in the grocery store. I think I'm going to start shopping in the middle of the night. But anyway, stopped me and was upset that we were, that the city was giving $30,000 to this, and I assured her that it was coming out of the lodging tax, and it was a good cushion in that account, and that the money that goes into it is used for things like this, and in turn, it will bring some business, restaurant business, and whatever, shopping into our town, which will be a great, a great asset for us. So, I assured her that it wasn't being taken out of some fund that we can't afford.
Correct.
Yeah. As one, I was a tiebreaker on this particular vote, and as being sitting on this committee for five years, we, it's, this is one of those opportunities that we almost, you're kind of waiting for, when are we going to have something that we really can kind of get behind, and that this is not just for this year, this is hopefully for every year, and looking at activities like the YMCA and something like this, especially for our young people to be involved in. But part of it is, we're only going to get out of this what we can put into it, and so it's an opportunity, I think, for all of us to watch for the dates on this and to go and watch these games and be, you know, we're cooperative during this process, because this has a real, a real positive effect for our community, I think, and so I am 100% behind this. And again, this is a fund that is set aside for things like this. This does not come out of our general fund. So, I am very much in favor of doing this. Any further comments or questions?
Yes, I would just like to say that this is exactly what this lodging tax is for, and I'm very, very happy at the potential that the Pee-wee Reese World Series is bringing to our community.
Okay. So, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation to award $30,000 to the AABC Pee-wee Reese World Series and to waive the reimbursement requirement under Resolution Number 902-1006, and authorize advanced payment as per RCW 24.24.080.
I will second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes. Very good. Item Number G is the business agenda section of our meeting, and at this point, we're going to hear by our Associate Planner, Logan Brady. There he is. And he's going to talk to us about our six-year transportation improvement program.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Purpose of this briefing is to discuss the six-year TIP, or Transportation Improvement Program, that is due to WashDOT annually, per RCW 35.77. The six-year TIP is a list of potential or current projects, transportation projects that will be completed or begin in the next six years. The list will be covered at a public hearing. At this time, we're just requesting that a public hearing be set for 2:00 on June 12.
And so, I have no problems with this. This is what we have to do, and so it's just constant doing business here. And so, do we concur with Logan?
Yes.
That this is something we need to do? All right. We're going to have a public hearing set for June 12, 2017, concerning our six-year transportation improvement program. Thank you very much.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Congratulations, Logan.
Thank you.
On what?
Graduated from college.
What?
With his engineering degree.
Hey! Okay, okay.
Pretty exciting. I watched it on Facebook.
Man.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that. Congratulations.
So, Facebook is good for some things.
Well, sure.
I wasn't invited. I had to watch it on Facebook. Congratulations, Logan.
He's got his tight, select group of friends and relatives, you know, I'm sure, so...
They only gave a six-ticket.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, now, we're into the Administration Reports section of our meeting, and the first department update is from our Police Chief, Darren Moody.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Mayor. Just a quick overview of some of the things going on at the Police Department currently. With the help of Human Resources, we just finished testing process and interview process for what we're calling a Community Service Officer, which will be a code enforcement/animal control officer for the city. And June 6, we'll be meeting with the Civil Service Commission to finalize that list and hopefully have somebody in place by the end of June on a permanent basis to address code enforcement issues and animal control issues in the city housed out of the Police Department. And today, again, with the help of Human Resources, we just finished corporal promotional testing. They went through a testing assessment center today through several different layers of testing. This will give two to three other members of the Police Department a chance to promote to the corporal rank, which is just below sergeant, giving another line-level supervisor out on patrol and in the field when sergeants aren't available. It's also very important... It's also very important for succession planning, as we do have a couple people that are approaching retirement age, and so these people will hopefully be able to step into the roles of future supervisors of the Police Department. Couple weeks ago, we rolled out body cameras, we'll be talking more about those in the future. We've had car cameras in our cars for years, so it's nothing new, it's no drastic change to anything that we've been doing currently, but it's much more improved, better quality, better control systems in place, all of the above, for the accountability of the officers, the accountability of the public, and the safety of all involved. These cameras are placed on the officers, they can wear them on their uniforms, and any contacts they have, driving, anything can be recorded on these body cameras, and we have a strict guidelines of policies, after much with the attorneys and our policy coordinators, to be able to what to put into place there, and I welcome any members of the public, or anybody who has questions on these body cameras, please come talk to us, and I'd be happy to walk you through everything as transparent as much. I got policies I'll show, I'll show you how the cameras work, when they can use them, when they can't use them. Like I said, we've been using the car cameras for years, the car cameras cost us five thousand dollars apiece. They're old, they're very, very hard to get the information out of, you have to download certain things, you have to take parts off of them, and so replacing those is pretty cost prohibitive at five thousand dollars apiece, and these were much more cost-effective, and we had a private donor come in from the community and offer to pay for them for us.
Wow.
So, they came at no cost.
Very good.
Fantastic.
So, we'll be, you'll see them out in the public wearing those, and like I said, anybody who has any questions, feel free to come in and contact us, don't put in a public records request, it's onerous and time-consuming, just come in and knock on the door, we'll be happy to walk you through everything and show you what's going on with them. Business watch, as you mentioned, last week, we held a business watch, it's a crime prevention tool, just like Neighborhood Watch, for businesses in town, you don't have to be a business, you can be, anybody in the city of Shelton that wants to come visit, Tuesday and Thursday this week, they'll be finishing up, but even if you miss the first one, I invite you to come by this Tuesday and Thursday, five-thirty here, that's right, right, five-thirty? I know you two came.
Yeah, it was very good.
Tuesday and Thursday nights here, for the business watch. That's all I have at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a comment about the doggy officer.
The animal control officer?
Yeah.
Doggy officer, anyway, I'm really glad that's in place, because several years ago, when it wasn't, we were sitting in our yard one night, family get-together, and a dog came through our yard and was, you know, begging to eat from all of us, and I called someone, and they said there's nobody to pick this dog unless it was being vicious, or, you know, so we just had to, like, put up with the dog. Well, and then a week later, I saw the dog clear on the other side of town, digging up somebody's flowers, so that dog needed to be captured, and I'm so thankful that you have put that back into place, for our protection, whether it's a mean dog, or just a dog that's being obnoxious, you know, in your yard.
I think code enforcement and animal control are two big quality of life issues that we deal with in any city, and we'll be able to address them in a much more timely manner, working in conjunction, we've already started work with Public Works, Parks, and other folks, to be able to tie together those things with planning and Jason.
Yeah, that's great.
We have a pretty good coordination amongst all the departments, like I said, Public Works, Parks, planning, to be able to do these type of things, example is Railroad Avenue, I mean, they came into us right away, Railroad Avenue said, what do you think from the traffic safety point of view of all the stuff we're doing down there, and we wholeheartedly approve.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
I have one question, are, I know that in the past, we've had an agreement with the county that we took some of their dogs.
Correct.
Are we doing that still?
Correct, yes, we still have contracts in place with Squawson, Skokomish, and the county, to be able to take dogs on a contract basis from them, and when they bring them down, so we still have that in place.
How much room do we have for animals?
We'll make room.
Oh.
We, we have, I wanna say, ten runs, maybe twelve runs down there that we can use, plus we have a really good partnership with Adopt a Pet, and I can tell you, since I've been here, ninety-nine point nine percent of the animals get adopted either through us, or through Adopt a Pet, the only animals we've had to put down have either been sick or injured, and unable to be cared for. But yeah, Adopt a Pet's done an incredible job with us, of helping us adopt out those pets.
Well, I know pet owners will really appreciate too, if their animal gets loose, knowing where to look for their animals, so.
That being said, we had a temporary person in place for the last two months, and we've already, based on what that person has done in that role, we've sold as many dog licenses in the first three months of this year as we did in twelve months last year, so I would encourage folks to get their dog license through the city of Shelton.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Next is an update from our fire captain, Casey Whitehouse, and I don't know that I've ever met Casey before.
I don't think we've had the opportunity to meet, I'm filling in for Chief McKern today, who's away at the state Fire Chiefs Conference in Spokane.
Well, welcome to our city commission meeting, and we're looking forward to an update.
Thank you for having me, I've got four items for an update for you guys regarding the fire department. First up is our response data, year-to-date, which I believe you have a copy of. At the time of report, our city responses totaled nine hundred and forty-two alarms, this is as we start to pick up in our busy time of the year, as the weather starts to get nice, our call volume increases pretty significantly. Those are our calls for the city for total district-wide numbers, as of the time of the report, we were at nineteen hundred and sixty-nine calls, and before I came over here for the meeting, I checked our reporting system, and we were already at two thousand one hundred and twelve alarms for the year, and so, if we stay on that trajectory, we will probably have our busiest year that we've ever had, more than likely, and so those trends tend to stay pretty continuous throughout the year for us. Second item up is our response planning and staffing for Forest Festival Weekend. We're trying something different this year, we're going to increase our staffing out of the downtown fire station, to make sure that we have adequate staffing for the influx of citizens that we have coming into town, so we're gonna have a total of seven firefighters on duty on Saturday, plus some folks as well on Sunday and Friday, and part of that staffing is we're gonna have an advanced life support unit on, so a paramedic unit on, to be able to provide that level of service to the citizens, as well as the Squawson Island Police Department was kind enough to loan us the use of their U T V, so when the parade's going on, we can use that vehicle to be more maneuverable, to get around the crowds, the parade route and everything like that, 'cause we usually wind up with one or two E M S calls while the parade's going on, so we'll have that capacity, plus our standby for the fireworks, the logging show, the fun run, that type of, that type of thing. We also have our pancake breakfast at the fire station that day, from seven in the morning till ten, so we'd love to have you, and that's at the fire station on Franklin Street. Next up, we're proud that we're going to be taking delivery of a new medic unit here within the next week or two, a new ambulance, the voters in the city of Shelton here were kind enough last summer to overwhelmingly approve a renewal to the emergency medical services levy, and part of our commitment with that renewal was that we were gonna be updating our ambulances. Two years ago, the voters in the fire district also overwhelmingly approved their emergency medical services levies, so the downtown fire station will be getting one of those new ambulances as well, to increase our capabilities there. And one of the things that our commissioners approved, the fire commissioners approved, was is instead of buying new ambulances, we did what were called remount units, so we took our existing ambulance boxes, had them remounted by Braun Northwest down in Centralia, that saves us about sixty, eighty thousand dollars per unit.
Wow.
So, wise use of taxpayer money there. And then lastly, is our update for the 2017 wildfire season, as you can see with the weather outside, with it being hot and dry out, this is our time of year where we start our preparedness and planning for our summer wildfire activities, our fire district has already had two small wildland fires, and as the weather continues to get hotter and drier, we, we tend to see more of those events as well. So, over the weekend, we certified five new wildland firefighters, our volunteer firefighters, that's in addition to the twenty-one certified wildland firefighters that we already have, we've been putting our apparatus, our wildland-specific apparatus into service the last couple of weeks, and so I'm proud to say that as of yesterday, all of that equipment and personnel is ready to go, and we're expecting, the early forecasts call for a normal fire season, and so we, we always plan for the worst, hope for the best, in that respect, and, and we always tell folks, ask us in October how the fire season went, so, unless you guys have any other questions or comments, that's all I have for you.
Well, go back and tell Chief McKern that you did a fine job, and that if he wants to send you next time, you'd be more than welcome to see.
I'll be sure to do that, thank you.
All right.
Congratulations on the saving of the money for the ambulances.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm whispering to give Vicki that, so that, 'cause I think we might wanted to do this, but it's not in my agenda there, so, but we'll, at this moment, move on with our next, Court Administrator Shelby Conklin is gonna come and talk to us about the courts.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, we received some really good news last week. We've been nursing along our community service van for quite a while now, hoping to make it last until we could replace it. It was purchased in nineteen ninety-one, when we first started the community service program, and it's been used almost exclusively for community service, with a few years as a jail transport van as well. It's had several problems, but most recently, the metal is fatigued around the door handles, and as door handles are about to fall up, so, that not being very safe, we were hoping to get through, but last Tuesday, at their meeting, the Mason County Transit Authority Board voted to grant one of their surplus vans to the city for the community service van. Their summary discussion purposes indicates that since the van has been paid for by the citizens of Mason County, they believe the citizens should continue to receive the benefit of those vans, and Dennett Brannon indicated that they plan discussions with the city and the county, as they plan to grant a van to the county as well, and will take additional documentation to the M T A Board after those discussions, so we're grateful and thank the Transit Authority for the grant of the van. Community service has been busy, here's what they've been doing over the last three and a half weeks, they scraped the parking lot and pulled the weeds from the sidewalk along Alder at the library, they weeded and planted the flowers around the log monument, they weeded and planted all the downtown planters, weeded and planted the flowers in S R three park, weeded and trimmed around the front street water treatment plant, weeded, trimmed and restacked sandbags by the dog pound and impound area, they cleaned all the tree grates and water drains on Railroad Avenue, picked up litter at the post office, the parks on G Street, Thirteenth, E Street, Adams, Olympic Highway North, K Street, the state, the skate park, the library, Turner Hill, S R three and Railroad Avenue. They weeded and removed sod, laid bark, and moved items at the community gardens, they cleaned up the camps and picked up litter in the Methodist Church Woods, and they are reinstituting the wood donation program as well, as the yard program. To be eligible for this service, individuals must live in the city limits and qualify for the city's reduced water rates program, and have no ability either themselves or household members to do the yard care or obtain wood. Wood donations are as the supply allows, and yard care is on a rotating basis. Today, they're working at the Brown Fire Station, they took down a couple of dead trees, and are weeding around the building, so, they've been busy.
They have been.
So, that's, that's it?
I saw them hard at work over at the fire station today.
Did you?
Yes, yeah.
Can Sharon tell the community service officer that she's doing an awesome job?
I will, thank you.
And, yes, very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And our last update will be from our Community Development Director, Mark Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, a few reports from the different departments under community development today, we're hoping to have the final environment impact statement for the city of Shelton's comp plan to you this month, looks like that'll be delayed for a little, we're not quite sure how long, but it will be delayed, we're waiting on the county to address some population allocations and the countywide planning policies, with some changeover in staff over there, they've decided to take a, take a new look and reexamine those, we're waiting on some decisions made from staff and from the Plan Advisory Committee of the county, and then we will be off and running again with our comp plan rewrite for adoption this year. And the Parks and Recreation Department, we've distributed the Summer Recreation brochure starting late last week, so that's in print and online on the city's website, we'll be distributing to the schools this week and getting that information out, so people are getting prepared for summer activities for their children. I wanna thank Shelby and Jerry and the Community Service Department for planting flowers at the log monument, that's an annual project that the Christmas Town Kiwanis sponsors, they donate the flowers, purchase them from the F F A program up at the high school, so we have a kind of a chain reaction of benefit through the community here that supports the kids up at the high school, and then beautifies the entryway into Shelton on S R three. We started our second seasonal employee in the Parks Department on May fourth, Wednesday, May fourth, so this is an evening shift, so this works Wednesday through Sunday from twelve, twelve P M, noon, to eight-thirty P M, so this is a person that helps with activities and events in the parks, preps ball fields, cleans up the facilities, you know, empties garbage cans, and picks up litter and things like that, so we don't have such a burden in the mornings, and then locks up the restrooms, too, at night, so they're not left open at night, and susceptible to vandalism, really a beneficial position that we added several years ago. The Parks guys are extremely busy, as everybody knows, their grass is growing in their front yard, and the grass is growing in the parks as well, and the weeds are popping up in the, in the beds, so they're extremely busy with those, we had the Master Gardeners Plant Sale this month in Neeland Park, so it takes some time to coordinate those events, we're looking forward to the Relay for Life event in June, coming up here at Neeland Park for the first time ever, it'll be moved from the high school down to Neeland Park, so there's events coming up in our parks that we're happy to coordinate with the community as well. Another activity that the department participated in was a visit up to Bordeaux Elementary School with the mayor last week, we got to learn about their activities and their student council, and their initiative to, to promote a kindergarten month at the state legislature with Representative Griffey's endorsement, and they are interested in adopting Pioneer Way as a street to pick up litter on a regular basis, so we are forwarding, forwarding that message on to them, and we have a letter of support that's presented to you today, quoted Governor Inslee, to the, to speak to the cause of the Bordeaux Elementary School Student Council and supporting their kindergarten month initiative.
Can I add on a little to that, and Mark and I went up there, and what the teacher, Mary Cliff up there did, is she actually last year formed the student body, and they put in this bill, and it didn't get in, it didn't get out of committee, but then they did it again this year, and it did get out of committee, I believe, and they actually have a twenty-minute, one-on-one, face-to-face meeting with the governor on getting this passed of kindergarten month, so, you know, I'm kind of excited about it, and so, timing may, timing may be sensitive in here, we might have to sign this sooner than later. Did you have the time on when that letter needed to get back to you, or anybody? We have the letter, and so, what do we have to do to sign it, just concur that we think it's a good idea?
Well, I think we should read it into the record, and then the Commissioner can go on.
Would now be the proper time, after we let Mark go? Or, does he wanna say?
I've got a few more items, you can do the letter, or I can finish up.
I was excited about the kids, okay, um, well, let's see, why don't, why don't you finish your report, and then we'll do this.
Terrific, all right, good enough. I'll move on to the Facilities Department, some changes are coming in the customer service activities at the city of Shelton, on May thirtieth, the customer service desk upstairs and for administration, Public Works, Community Development, will be closed down, we'll start some renovation in that area, so the general public, when they wanna address those departments, find somebody in those departments, pull out permits and whatnot, we go to the other side, at the top of the stairs, right side where finance is currently housed, we'll have customer service located up there at that time, through June twenty-sixth at this point, that's where customer service will be located until we have a new desk installed, and then the customer service that you see downstairs in the civic center here, the kiosk inside the front doors will move up there at that time as well. This is an effort to streamline our customer service activities, utilize our staff in a more efficient manner, and provide the best service we can to the public, we think this is gonna be really beneficial to, to everybody that comes in, it might be a little learning curve, but we'll certainly be able to provide them It might be a little learning curve, but we'll certainly be able to provide them more rapid response and, and more streamlined services in providing them the activities they are looking for. Let's see, oh, utility bills. That's most of the activity downstairs is payment of utility bills. Want to encourage people that there are online options. If they don't want to come up the stairs, there's always an elevator behind the stairs, and we'll be promoting this publicly. We'll put some signs up, we'll get the information out, and make sure everybody's aware that these changes are, are coming up again by June twenty-sixth is the, is the date that we will have all employees, all the staff moved upstairs. And then the Building Department, I'm pleased to announce that we have a building inspector starting on June first, so.
Wow.
We've had a building inspector, candidate that accepted a job offer. He'll be starting on Jan, excuse me, June first, and will be in-house. So we will have some more information on desk hours, when they'll be available, the general public to come in and ask any questions they might have at that time. We really hope this also streamlines some of our processes and permit processes upstairs. Over the last month, we've had twenty-two total permits in the Building Department, and as of today, this year, we are up to twelve single-family resident permits issued, which is one more than last year, which was eleven. So we've already surpassed the total amount of single-family resident permits this year from last year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's great news. I, I understand that when Cascade Natural Gas goes through, they'll be applying for permits for new hookups to the homes that are currently served by that. Are you seeing those permits coming through yet, and are we going to have to do anything special to handle those?
I'm not aware of any permits. I haven't had any discussions with them specifically, so.
Surprise!
Yeah, so.
Get ready.
It looks like, if that's the case, and we'll be seeing bulk permits at any one point, yeah, it might be, it'll be beneficial for us to reach out and see what their intent is.
Okay, I apologize. I thought they had been in communication with you.
I have a question, Tracy, on that. Isn't that the Cascade gas already over there, and they're just updating?
They're replacing all of the gas lines.
Most of the people already have hookups to gas over there, do you know?
They're going to be doing it throughout the city, so everyone, the gas lines that are, that supply gas, complete, under the, under the streets and under the properties, they will be doing those. And then in my conversation, they said that they wanted to renew each of the individual gas meters that are attached to the houses as well, so.
Very good.
And I did ask, and they said they would be applying for permits. I had one more question for you about, about the plant sale at Neeland Park. I was there, and it was kind of a mud hole. I was really worried about the damage done to the grass and to the park itself. Has it recovered from?
It will recover. It, it, it takes a little time, and, you know, and this, the weather we've had this, this year hasn't lent itself to large activities like that.
Yeah.
But the general foot traffic, the damage from that is temporary. What we try to avoid is any rutting or vehicles on the turf.
Oh, I see.
Those types of things that might provide more serious damage, and so we, we address that with, with, with any tenant or any user of the park.
Yeah.
And try to limit those as much as we can, especially with the, with the conditions we've had this year. So they'll, they'll recover as the, as the, you know, things dry out, and the Parks Department can work into it. They'll recover, and we won't see any permanent damage.
It was definitely a rubber boot event.
Yes.
Was there been any questions, people asking about using the park during the Pee-wee baseball, as far as camping down there or whatever? Has that been brought up at all?
I have not been approached about camping in any of our park facilities.
Okay.
All right. Does that conclude your report?
That's it today.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, so now back to the issue of the letter and the request. So, do you want to read that into the record?
Absolutely. Honorable Governor Inslee, in support of the student body from Shelton's Bordeaux Elementary School, including Gwenny Smith, President Loki Dobson, Vice President, and Sicily Dodge Secretary, the Shelton City Commission is honored to support House Bill nineteen oh one, sponsored by Representative Dan Griffey, recognizing September as the month of the kindergartner. The importance of a good education is the foundation of a healthy, strong community, and that starts at a very early age. Officially recognizing and celebrating the start of the student's journey through school, beginning in their very first month of kindergarten, is an appropriate way to help instill the value of education in the student. Sincerely, Mayor Karantz. Tracy Moore, Commissioner of Public Works. Kathleen McDowell, Commissioner of Finance.
So, do we concur that that's a nice letter to send to our governor?
Yes.
Okay, so what do we need to do at this point? Just sign it and give it to him? All right. All right, that's very good. Thank you very much on that. Now we'll turn the meeting over to our city manager for a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm excited to have this conversation today, because when I started, the road diet had just begun. It was done, I think, two or three weeks before I started, and one of the first things I heard was, "What did you guys do on Railroad?" Over the last nine months, we have listened to a lot of people throughout the community. Craig has presented some of the changes that have come forward, and we are getting very close to, I think, finishing what the Visioning Committee actually put together and improving on the road diet that started last year. So I'm gonna detail some of the things that have happened over the last couple of weeks since we last spoke about what's going on down there. Last night, Stripe Right, our contractor, came in and very efficiently removed the paint that is no longer needed. They were also kind enough to send their best manager, who also happens to be a high climber grad. They took care of Railroad from First to Seventh and Franklin in about two and a half hours. Franklin's being reconfigured or configured to the previous incarnation to improve movement down there. And then I also want to recognize my appreciation for the work that Craig Gregory and the Public Works crew did in coming up with some very creative solutions to make some improvements. We had a couple issues that we felt were gonna come up over the next week. One of those is that we are likely making the most dramatic improvement in downtown Shelton with the restriping of Railroad that's gone on in a few generations. And one of the important things that we're doing is we're actually moving the center line from where it's been for decades. And I tasked Craig with coming up with a creative solution to not only make sure that motorists are aware of that, to increase their awareness, but also see if he could do it in a way that, long-term, makes things a little bit cheaper. And through consultation with his engineering staff and the rest of Public Works' street team, they have come up with what I think is a very appropriate solution, and something that I think is going to improve the aesthetics down on Railroad. So first, Craig tried to find something that would give a tactile warning. We've already determined that we want to put in the red median, so people can see that there is a separation there. And they came up with raised pavement markers. This is something that he really quickly identified as used in other cities, namely Bellevue, Kent, and Tomwater. He consulted with Tomwater's Public Works, and I spoke with their city manager last week. They actually use this as a city standard now, so they do not paint the, the lines on the streets anymore. They only use these. And we asked their folks what they thought of them. They have had a lot of success, and we appreciated the work that they shared, so that we don't have to make the same mistakes that they made in putting ours in. So after those consultations, we made sure that we got a decent idea of what was going on and, and let some folks throughout the community take a look. So we brought down about twenty people over a couple of days when we set up some tests. We brought down the three of you individually. We had three engineers, two on staff, and a consultant engineer take a look. We had members from the Visioning Committee, MTA, their director came down, chamber director. We brought people from different fields, lawyer, insurance agent. We had city staff. We even had a city photographer that is around town come and take a look, and there was overwhelming support for making this move and placing the pavement markers in place of the regular yellow paint that would have normally been done. In doing so, Craig and his team have allowed us to pay a little more upfront, but get a lot more bang for our buck. So while these traffic markers cost more, they should last a lot longer. Normally, Craig and his team are scheduling painting every year at this time, so our expectation is that we won't have to paint for a number of years, and these traffic markers, with the exception of a few that may come off and will be replaced, we won't have to go down and lay these again. So after three years, we will actually be ahead in doing so. We also wanted to address safety, because that was one of the things that Craig and especially a couple of his engineering team brought up. And so in working with some of the other cities and calling to find out how they have handled events that are held downtown, we actually found a couple items that we want you to take a look at, so that you can see. And I apologize if it's not as big back there, I might be able to point out what we're looking at. So these are different parades that are around, and you can see on the ground that those very energetic kids are all doing some gymnastics right down the street on top of those pavement We also had contact with the City of Kent, and they mentioned this act, which we thought represented some of the flexibility that people have as they're doing their activities right on top of the markers, in addition to the horses that are walking straight down the center line. Next, we come back to Tomwater, where they mentioned that they have a number of different kids groups that go through their parade, and their route is almost exclusively on roads with these traffic markers. And then obviously, any parade is gonna have a band, so I would hope that we would have the expectation that if Tomwater can do something, Shelton can do it a lot better. And if Tomwater can have their bands going down the middle of the street with these traffic markers, I think that you'll find the same here.
One for Forest Festival.
And then one more we have is, you can't see it until they actually pass, but these veterans are actually walking over the exact same setup that we have, so you'll see come into view that they actually just walked over the same median setup that we have. So with those things in mind, obviously, this isn't a perfect solution. Nothing really is. I would point out that even with the ADA ramps that we have now, I mean, this morning, I saw a gentleman trip over an ADA ramp that is usually easier to get up, but those things happen. So again, I want to thank Craig and his team with coming up with a very creative solution and working not only professionally, but also very quickly, to make sure that this is done in time for Forest Festival. We are hoping that this creative solution helps revitalize part of downtown and allows us to not be the first to do something, but follow in the footsteps of cities that have done this successfully in the past.
Well, I, I am extremely happy with what we have. I'm happy with the process of bringing everybody into it. But just like everything, you will not make everybody happy. There are gonna be people that don't like it, and, but you get seventy percent of the people that want to do something. That's what we need to do, and I'm really glad that we went with that way. It will, in the long run, actually save us money. And I was walking down the street today, just imagining my car kinda doing this, and so I'm kinda looking forward to tonight actually doing it, right?
Yeah, and that's one of the, the main things that we noted. If it rains, or once it gets dark, it is very difficult to see the yellow center line. And this, every, I think, four or five markers, you'll actually have a reflective marker, so it'll provide a lot more visibility at night and in the rain. That's my report.
All right.
Nice.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will announce our next meeting will be on May thirtieth at two PM in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.
A Tuesday.
Tuesday, that's right.
It's a Memorial Day.
Yes, not Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
I knew that.